All right, we'll begin with pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call now. All trustees are present. And now we have an option for the good of the order. If there are any questions anyone wants to bring forward for the good of the order.
I got one. There's the someone special dance, I think, like two weeks ago. I went. I don't think we've ever done one of those before, and it was awesome. I hope we do.
Saw pictures of both of these guys.
It was fantastic. I was gonna say something during my, um, didn't mean to steal your conversation.
No, no, I was gonna say, I just wanted to say, it was fantastic, the VTA community that put it together, like all the volunteers. It was just probably one of the nicest nights I've ever had here. It really was wonderful, so.
Um, is that it?
That's it.
I don't know if there are any students in the audience, if there are any students in the audience that would like to come forward and be heard. They're cordially invited to you now. Okay, if there is anyone here from public who would like to be heard, the podium looks, thank you.
Hi. Hi, I'm Kelly Lender. I've been teaching at VES for the past nineteen years and have been president of the VTA for the past three. I'm here tonight on behalf of the VTA. Over the past three years, school has changed for both teachers and students. When COVID shut down school buildings, we did not stop educating students. Our teaching had to look different, but we were determined to help our kids. Teachers, myself included, tried to learn new technology, to teach virtually, and have continued to learn new technology and other techniques to keep students engaged and give them opportunities that they wouldn't have otherwise had. I would like to highlight a few of those for you. In seventh grade math, Alyssa Seberg has worked with students to create college pennants while also researching and calculating tuition costs in the distance from Lorisville to a college or trade school of their choice. She also used near pod to take students on virtual field trips and college tours. Shannon Spolin used virtual reality headsets to visit concentration camps, Anne Frank's Annex, and other pivotal locations of the Holocaust as a culminating activity in her high school English class. Mary Farber Peck worked with sixth and seventh grade students to develop their own businesses and logos to match. Caitlin Rice and Jen Folds have established Spanish buddies between fourth graders and AP Spanish students. They meet both in person and virtually to learn Spanish and build relationships between high schoolers and elementary students. Tom Glad uses Canva to design a form to post reminders for students and post inspirational quotes to encourage them to think about and discuss. Tim Kelly, Kristen Heide, and all elementary teachers have continued to offer families the option to attend meetings virtually instead of in person so that parents don't have to take a bunch of time off of work. Mike Stewart has integrated Delta Math into his high school classes, which provides videos to assist students and provide immediate feedback when they're working at home or independently. Jules Linsky has worked with the Promethean Board to capture the learning done on a regular basis and make it available to students who are not in class in a meaningful way. Kyle Tursky has worked with his digital electronics class to create gingerbread houses that were then wired with LED and blinking lights that involved soldering and circuitry together on their own. His introduction to engineering classes have constructed hydraulic arms, mousetrap-powered cars, lane machines, and are currently working on cable cars. I could go on and on. We are passionate, enthusiastic, talented educators, but there are fewer and fewer individuals entering the field of education. The average salary in our contract is more than nine percent below the average suburban council teacher. The suburban council schools are the schools that the district compares us to academically, and we believe is who we should be compared to in our salary schedule. If we are going to attract and retain equally passionate, enthusiastic, talented educators, we need to improve our salary schedule. We only get the opportunity to see raises with contract negotiations and feel that this is a critical time for Lorisville since we have so many teachers nearing the end of their to continue to provide the exceptional academic experience that our students deserve. Please stay at the forefront of your mind as you consider our financial proposals during this round of negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lender. Appreciate your comments. Would anyone else like to be heard at the beginning? Thank you. We now are going to have something that is not on the agenda, was mistakenly omitted. We'll call it 3.0.5, or if you put 0.1. And it is the Bus Patrol presentation, everyone?
Yes, you have it right. And we have Joe and Adam. And yeah, if I'm saying that right, from Bus Patrol, unfortunately, right now, when the Promethean Board turned off, we can't get the screen back up for them, so we can hear them, but we cannot see them. It just will not let me log into that same TV. I'm hoping it will pop up in a minute, but it will not work for screen mirroring at the moment. So Rodney, can you hear us? And? Oh, we can't hear you, Rodney. Can you hear us now? Anyone? How about now?
There you are.
Can you hear me? Cory?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So Rodney, I apologize, we don't have a screen right now for you to present. Okay. So you, a little bit, and try to get that working. But feel free to start the conversation with our board. We have our full board here tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. And first of all, thanks for giving us a platform to talk about the county's school bus safety program. I know it has been talked about with the board a couple of times through our discussions and obviously through email and multiple phone calls. I believe we do have two representatives from the county as well in the audience. If they could maybe say a little hello.
They're here.
Perfect. So yeah, so in 2019, New York State passed some enabling legislation really to provide a safer agenda for passengers onboarding and offboarding the school. And that was 1174A state enabling legislation that really enabled counties, municipalities, villages, cities to pass local law to support a safer journey to and from school for all students. And you know, there's some students in the board today, which is great. And you know, the real agenda was is to make a safer community all in all. In 2019, the National Association of Student Transportation did a survey, and it's about one passing of a bus stop arm per bus per day on average across all of the United States. And that's 535,000 buses that are operating on a day-to-day basis. And you can think about that as an alarming statistic. And so when the New York State, New York State passed the law, Albany County decided to look at the problem within their market and eventually going off to a tender and going to a competitive bid process to bring in, you know, a technology platform to help support the county's problem within the school districts around school bus safety. During that process, they selected Bus Patrol to drive that as a safety agenda across all the school districts. And since then, we've had four schools really leaned forward on adopting the school bus safety agenda for the county. You know, what is the school bus safety agenda, I think is an important aspect, is really what it is is to keep motorists accountable. Every single day, our most precious cargo, our students, get on and off the bus. And you know, citizens and residents are becoming busier and busier and more distracted as they drive. So what we've done collectively with the emergence of technology is provide a safety mechanism on all the school buses to keep motorists accountable for passing the school bus. And we do that with our technology, our ABA technology that sits on the outside of the bus. And as the bus stop arm opens, it actually captures all of the necessary information in order to put a video evidence package together for the county's enforcement technician to review and approve or disapprove the citation of the motorist passing the school bus. The way the New York State law is written is this is a monetary penalty. This is all part of a broader, you know, public service announcement to really help drive, drive and curb, you know, motorists from, you know, taking that risk around passing the school bus stop arm. So it is a civil fine of nature that gets sent to the owner of the vehicle. All of our technology platform, together with, with the county, really enables that platform around reviewing evidence packages, ultimately issuing the citation, sending a notice to the violator, giving the violator the opportunity to review that car passing the school bus stop arm, and then ultimately a platform for them to, you know, pay the citation. If there are any concerns with the citation, a Bus Patrol does offer a 1-800 number, an entire call center to support any violator questions, ultimately giving them all the mechanisms and information required to ultimately pay the citation. At that point in time, if there are disputes with the citation, we also prepare all the court dockets for all the municipalities across Albany County to support any disputes that may happen. So we handle the end-to-end around processing, maintaining the hardware and working along with the county to keep these motorists accountable. All of this is done on our platform. Today, we have South Colony, Bethlehem, Gilderlin, and Burnox all participating in the program in Albany County. And it is the most adopted program in New York State is the Bus Patrol program with multiple programs in Town of Hempstead, Dutchess County, Rensselaer, Rensselaer City, Rockland County, Schenectady City just passed local legislation as well, which is great, Suffolk County. So we're well over 6,500 buses and 120 school districts across New York State, keeping it a safer journey to and from school. I'm just gonna pause there because there's a lot of information. Let's see if anybody has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
No questions yet, Rodney.
Okay, perfect. So the, the way New York State law is, is written is really, it's all enabling legislation. So the state enables the legislation, the county adopted a request for proposal for a competitive bid process. They have partnered with us, Bus Patrol, to bring this into the community. And then it's the school districts and the community within the school districts that really own the participation. So it's the school district and their asset, which is the bus, really have the opportunity to participate in this county-based program. I see. What is a question?
Yeah, yes. My question was, so a fine is levied, and there is money paid, and where does the money go?
Perfect, yeah. The way the New York State law is designed, so a lot of the, what we call is the flow of funds or the policies as it relates to the, to the, to the fine amount, it goes through to the county. That's how it's all set up. And if there is a dispute, there is a percentage that goes to the municipality in which they hear the dispute. But all of that is laid out into the New York State law. So we just enable that, that law through our, our flow of funds mechanism.
So where do you make your money?
We make our money on a contractual split between the county and our, and our, our company.
So when I ask where the money goes, part of it goes to you eventually.
Oh, yes, yeah, for sure. So this is what are called violator-funded initiatives. So we outlay all the equipment, all the cost. We get all the programs up and running at no cost to the county or the school districts or the municipalities. And in exchange, we do get a percentage of the split of the revenue.
Thank you.
What is the percentage?
Joe, I'll kind of maybe default that to Joe if he wants to talk about the contracts between Bus Patrol and the...
Okay, well, the split with Bus Patrol would be 60/40. And I'll just add that the money that comes into the county, there's one line for it, and that's education. So every penny that comes into the county goes right back out into the community. We just started a bus program with putting ads on the back of buses that go all throughout Albany County to let folks know that it's illegal to pass a stop school bus. We got PSAs in the works, and we're going to different conferences around, around the county just to let people know what, what the situation is in terms of stopping for a school bus. And that's our only, this is all about safety.
When you say 60/40, 60 to?
To, to Bus Patrol.
Is 40 to the county.
Right.
And as a school district, all we're doing is we're protecting our kids.
The only thing the school district is doing is raising their hand if they want to participate.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And if there, a quick other question. The flow of funds, if there is a dispute and the locality has to handle the dispute, percentage of those funds go to the locality. Does that come out of the county's 40% or does that come out of the holistic 100%?
It comes out of the 100%. And then out of that 90%, then that could...
Then that could split.
Why doesn't the county do this directly without a third party?
Well, the cost of outfitting the buses and going through the entire, they handle, Bus Patrol handles everything. The only thing we have to do is to make sure that we notify the residents of the county what, what the, what the law is and what the program is about.
I'm sorry, didn't catch your name.
Joe Bonnerigo.
Joe, the person who was online here, who was supposed to be on that board, said your state, where is he located?
Virginia, I believe.
Okay. And so this is a national program?
This is a national program.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, there's 24 states that have adopted enabling legislation for automated enforcement on school buses. So we, we participate in most of those states, New York State being one of the, the forerunners of it, which is great. But there's Maryland, Virginia, Pennsylvania. We just passed laws in Tennessee and in Florida recently as well. So we continue to grow the safety agenda across all the, all the markets. Bus Patrol, the company itself, we're well over 16,500 buses across these multiple states that are making it a safer journey to and from school. We are the leader in this space. We, this is the only thing our company does, is focus on student transportation and automated enforcement across these markets that have state-enabling legislation.
I have a question. What's the ownership of Bus Patrol? Are you a for-profit company?
Yes, we are. Yeah, we're a private for-profit company.
So you're private, there's no shareholders?
There's private shareholders. Yeah, so we're, we're part of a, a private equity firm.
Quick, on, on average, what would it cost to equip a bus with the equipment that you have from Bus Patrol?
For our equipment itself or in the general, in the market? So it's on average, yeah, so ours, we, it's about with installation, so our program, just I'll kind of, I'll step back a little bit before answering that from a dollars and cents standpoint. Our programs are five-year contracts. We equip all of the buses, we maintain all of the buses, and we have every support. So if there's an issue with one of the cameras or, you know, in, in upstate New York, if there's an issue with some of the cameras because of the weather, we dispatch a technician and we support that on a day-to-day basis. So whether it's Bethlehem's 100 buses or Gilderlin's 100 buses, we continuously maintain all of the cameras on the buses, and we do the entire fleet. So the one thing that we really do as a core differentiation is we do equitable safety across all zip codes. So we don't select routes. Everyone has the ability to have the same amount of afforded safety equipment on all the buses. And this also supports anything to do with what we would call fleet turnover. So on average, most of the school districts turn over about 10% of their fleet on an annual basis. So we would go in, uninstall all that cameras, make the buses like new if they want to auction them off, and then put the cameras on the new buses. And we work hand-in-hand with all of the, all of the school districts. The hardware, the software, and the maintenance, all that is about $6,000 to equip the bus, per bus.
Thank you.
A quick question for, quick question for the county. So right now, I'm assuming it's the county that has to find the motorists who, right? You, the county, actually send, send out the ticket?
Well, Bus Patrol sent out the ticket. We approve it.
You approve it?
Yeah, we're the second approval level of approval. We send it back to Bus Patrol and then they...
So they do the actual mailing?
Yeah.
And so we currently have stop-arm cameras on a number of our buses. Is, why are tickets not even being prosecuted or are they not able to be prosecuted that, right now? Right? So as we sit right now, I know, I know we don't have total coverage, but is there a reason if we see somebody going through on our camera, is that not good enough to be prosecuted by the county or to have a invoice sent by the county?
So I'm, I'm, I can work for the county as well. So there's a couple of things that go with that. Under 1174A, the vehicle traffic law that enables the citations to be issued, these are civil citations, they're registered on the vehicles, they're easy paths.
Yep.
If you're looking to actually issue a citation to the operator, there's one key component of that. You must prove who's operating the vehicle. In order to do that, you either have to have a clear picture of the person, or they have to admit that they are the person that was driving. Now, given those circumstances, that's a tremendous strain potentially on law enforcement to do that, to get somebody to really admit to it or to actually capture them and somehow be able to recognize them in the photo. Want to put all that emphasis in one specific area. For example, if a vehicle goes by a stop bar right here on 85A, if it's somebody from Orange County, law enforcement isn't going to drive to Orange County to work on a traffic citation. And we see these citations and we see where they're coming from. They're coming from all over the state and outside the state. So if we were to try to do that, you could do some of them, and there would be a percentage that a citation could be issued. But it would really only be the people that are right in the immediate area of where that law enforcement agency has jurisdiction.
Right. But so why, why can't you issue the civil?
Because the, the way the law is written.
So is the way the law written requires a, like, for-profit third party to issue that?
No, it, it just requires the MOU and the contract of what is on the information. But you would have to have an MOU that allows you to see the license plate data and information and then generate the citations from there. So it's really like the question that's asked for, it's kind of cost prohibitive for us to do it on our own, given the fiduciary cost of the equipment and then the citation, the DMV contracts, the licensing, the mailing, all those things, you're adding all those layers, which are a lot more layers of expenditures on the county's part or the municipality's part.
So is the issue that, like having LPR, right, like automatic license plate recognition, is that the, like it? I, I guess I'm just curious, what's stopping us from sending a civil as opposed to, you know, the traffic citation? If we have the same data, right?
We have to have all the same infrastructure in place, the infrastructure of the cameras, the computer systems, the processing, the letters, and so on and so forth, which, when you add all those layers, there's a lot more to it than just getting the data and mailing out the citations to keep track of them. The personnel resources that are expendative. In this case, Bus Patrol is doing all that. The county is just reviewer and determining if there's a citation issue. So you'd really have to, I mean, we're at the point that we have one person, it's a full-time job, getting citations, as well as the rest of us on the implementation and project team. So those are things that you would then have to add in, that you're in your costs for personnel services, you know, fringe benefits, all those things. And that's what kind of makes it cost prohibitive.
Okay, so I'm sure that I probably speak for everybody about, my main concern is safety. But I'm probably, patrol, patrol people, how many of these violations have you been able to identify?
So?
So I, I can speak on that if you would like. My name's Corey Finley. I'm the program manager in, for, for New York State. I, I oversee Niagara Falls, Rensselaer City, Rensselaer County, Albany County, as well as the Town of Hempstead and Nassau. So I, I'm just gonna speak briefly about, I, I can give you numbers for April for the three school districts that are in monetary violations, if you would like. I can, I can start with, with South Colony. They, they've been live for the longest time out of the three school districts. And for the month of April, and you have to take it with a grain of salt because roughly eight to 10 school days was, depending on your school break, they were off. So there was no school buses running. So in the month of April, just in South Colony, you're looking at roughly about 420 citations were, were generated in that school district, which consists of, you know, the Town of Colony and South Colony. So out of those, you know, just for your edification, they, they get, these, these 420 or so go out to the county for a review. And out of those 421, only 45 were declined. And that's just another check and balances on our end, you know, to ensure that it's meeting the criteria of the law, meeting the standard that the red lights are on in the front of the bus, the stop arms are engaged. And, and, you know, it meets all portions of that, that statute. When you look at Bethlehem School District, they, they reviewed 78 and, and 13 were declined. So there's, there's a healthy, you know, review process. In Gilderlin, you're looking at about 312 and 43 were declined. So those, those are the, the real numbers when it comes to Albany County today. And, you know, I, I've, I've worked with the, the Bethlehem School District. I, I did a presentation for the school bus operators, you know, just meeting with them and, and speaking with the, the operators and, and, you know, they're, they're asking, hey, so we don't have to write down license plate or anything like that anymore? And, and the answer is no. You just have to worry about driving. They're professional drivers. Some have been doing it for 30-plus years. And, and so now they could just concentrate on that, knowing that every single one that passes the school bus is going to be captured. Whether it be eight in one stop-arm event, or whether it be 20, or just one. So, so that's, that's what our, our technology is able to do.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah. I, I don't quite understand why the numbers are so high in South Colony. Is it because there's four-lane roads? I mean, I can't see 300 violations in Lorisville in a month. I'm just trying to process those numbers, if you could help me.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'd have to break down the numbers, you know, to, to identify the, the road structure. So I, I don't have that in front of me. But, you know, th- those are the actual numbers, you know, so they're, they're not inflated by any, any stretch of the imagination. That, that's, that's real live data.
So we can speak specifically on that. The county executive just ran some numbers for an educational event that we did last week during Operation Safe Stop, which is a statewide initiative. And for South Colony, about 78% of those violations are on Central Avenue, which is a four-lane road. But that still leaves you 25% of something in the 400s that are happening on two-lane, mostly 30-mile-long highways. And that's why things like Bethlehem is a really good example because there's very small section that is a four-lane road, really only Delaware Avenue from about Elsinore to the safety line, less than 1.2 miles. So those give you some real numbers that are comparable to your jurisdiction out here.
Do you have another question? I have a question for you. This is supposed to act as a deterrent, and you've been missed in other places for some periods of time. Have you noticed any decline in the number of citations over time since its inception and with the education and the deterrence of fines?
Yeah, 100%. What we typically see on, the first year is typically the highest because you're actually starting to measure the reality of the market. Not so much around, you know, Operation Safe Stop or bus drivers taking down information, or you're calling them into dispatch. These are real, actual numbers. And what we do typically see is a 30% reduction after the first year, which is a substantial amount, as you can think about. uh, which is the substantial amount, as you can think about it from, from the high, highest levels. Uh, there is usually a stabilization, a stabilization period over time. Uh, when you kind of think about the third year or the fourth year, specifically if you're in a demographic that is of high growth area of, you know, new residents coming in or new driver taking licenses. There is a, a constant education, um, and PSA. That's it, you know, and this is just one form of that, uh, PSA. So we do that on a continuous basis. So as we get additional school districts onboard it, there'll be a resurgence of the PSAs. Uh, we do them at the start of the year. We have content and collateral, uh, to support it all the way down to the school levels, down to the, the students themselves who play a critical role in the, in, in their own safety agenda around crossing the, the, the school bus stop arm. Uh, so all of that is done and we do this in concert with the, the county as well. So all of this is a, an effort in order to reduce that number year over year to ensure that we're continuously driving the safety agenda for the community. Uh, this is where it's really important for school districts, specifically on the participation side. One of the other things that we do, uh, from Bus Patrol in, in Viet's on the phone, but we do implementation. What that really means is that we, uh, we use technology to deal, deal fence the school districts and the municipalities in which they're in. So as we expand through the county and get more school districts to adopt the safety agenda, um, we are able to identify all of the areas and what, what are known as the hotspots to continuously advise motorists that, you know, these are high-stake, uh, stop areas for the county for, uh, students onboarding and offboarding school buses. So as part of the state law as well, there is a requirement to add signage, uh, going in and out of the county. So every street, um, whether it's a, uh, a New York State street or a, um, or a county street, uh, that goes into county, uh, Albany County, there are signage to say that there is a stu-, uh, a school bus safety program in place and, uh, we do recording. So all of these are measures that are part, in part of the PSA to really help curb, um, you know, the amount of, you know, the recklessness around the school buses, what we've been seeing, which is a, at an alarming rate.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? Thank you very much for taking the time to be here with us, both in person and online. We appreciate your insights and your, um, information.
And we, we had a, a deck prepared, so I'll send that now, now that we have the screen, but I'll send that over to, uh, to you guys so we can see what everything that we've been talking about in a visual. So it's just not us parading it with, with words. So you'll have that as collateral to support your, uh, your decision. So the, the, the role of the school district is a resolution to participate in the agreement. Um, that, that's the, the role of the, the school district. And once they've done that, uh, we ratify that and we start the implementation, which includes installation, implementation, as well as PSA for the school and the community and get, uh, all of the court set up. Uh, so we, we handle all of that as well.
Thank you. Very informative.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joe and Adam. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
You're welcome to join us for the rest of the evening.
Or you can go to dinner.
Someone would like to. We have, um, a budget hearing as our next item on the agenda. We have a vote for the budget, uh, next Tuesday.
And now that we have it up and running, so I do want to apologize that it was on my phone. Um, I was talking to Shawna Worley, so thank you Shawna. If you notice, we did have it up and working at seven o'clock and all of a sudden it turned off. Um, you know, so two hours of planning and it doesn't work. So that's what happens. And then I'm also working on the Hootie. So the Owl, um, is the camera system that we have for the district. So if you could see it moving during the time that people are speaking or talking, um, I'm using my phone to be able to control it during that timeframe. So just so you were wondering. There we go.
Can I ask, what about Bus Patrol? Is that some action to be recommended to us?
I think that's something that we would want to just, so let's look over the presentation. Maybe we can discuss it and decide whether or not we want to make a resolution at our June meeting.
Oh, okay.
If we should, if we should want to. Or we can discuss it in June and decide where we want to go from there.
So one, um, question, trying to take back just in terms of the law, um, because that's what I'm reading on my phone. Yeah, just pulling it out of my phone during the meeting.
Candy crush.
Yeah, candy crush. Um, it says for purposes of this paragraph, and I haven't read it that closely, roadway shall not include any state expressway routes or state interstate routes. So eighty-five A is a state road. So I think we need to know whether this would even apply to eighty-five A.
Road rage?
No.
Is that what you said?
No, no.
Road rage.
Eighty-five A is a state road. So. And eighty-five.
Yeah.
So how would that not apply to that?
But that's, I haven't read it that closely. I've been reading it while I'm sitting here, but somebody who's a lawyer for the district, not me, um, should look at that question.
I will send that question to our attorney and also I will send it to the county as well. So then we get both perspectives of it. And Marge, if you wouldn't mind, um, your microphone is off as well. Is there any other questions for me and, or for Jim regarding Bus Patrol? Okay. All right. So we're going to get right onto the budget presentation. This is the budget hearing. Uh, Jim and I will kind of tag team this together. Um, there's not a lot of change, but we've had a couple extra, um, components to the slide as we go. So. And it is really delayed. So fair warning, I don't know why it's doing that.
Full screen.
Oh, it is full screen. Oh, I guess I can't do full screen. So we'll do it that way. All right. So I apologize, but I think this is the best you're going to get for tonight when it comes to the slideshow. So goals in creation of twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So as we've talked about before, number one thing is to provide many sustainable opportunities possible for students. This is ongoing and be able to continue the work that we've been doing. To adjust to enrollment trends and realities, as you all know, we have been seeing increases over the past four years and we're going to be continuing to see increases. So we want to make sure that we can, thank you for trying. Appreciate that. Um, we want to make sure that we can continue to see the increases that we've seen already with our enrollment and make sure that we can prepare accordingly for it. Um, as we've talked about already is the limit on the impact of the local taxpayers. And also to create a fiscally sound budget where our total revenue is equal and estimated to our total expenses. So our goal is to keep us at around a normal year of ninety-seven point five percent. We don't want to be budgeting it out and then also only spending eighty-nine percent. Jim, do you want to talk about that?
Well, when you have a hard cap of one hundred percent, you always have to stay below it or you're going to breach through it at some point. So we set that at ninety-seven point five and what we believe we're going to spend. And I apologize if my voice cracks. My allergies are going nuts. Uh, so on the revenue side, we put in fund balance of two and a half percent roughly to balance those out. So that the revenue comes in at ninety-seven point five, the expense comes in at ninety-seven point five. If something gets screwed up, we use a little of the fund balance and we spend a little more. If something's a good year, we spend a little less and we have something to put in fund balance. So we try to stick in that area.
So list of our budget vote and dates at this point has gotten a lot smaller. So tonight is our district holder holds our budget hearing and then on the sixteenth is our annual school budget vote and board of education. Also, as you all know, the BTA, Teachers Association is putting on an amazing barbecue, uh, for roll and smoke. So just a shameless plug for them as well as we're going on. So benefits of our budget changes. Jim?
So we maintain the funds needed for our maintenance projects at all buildings, three hundred and twenty-five thousand that is put in to handle some of the deferred maintenance that we've had over the past few years. Uh, this next year will include camera systems, upgrading cabling so that the network can be the best it can be, payment repairs, roof repairs and other deferred maintenance. There's also another hundred thousand dollars. It's a capital outlay project that's allowed under the law. Basically, you spend a hundred thousand dollars, you get paid back at your aid ratio, which in our case is sixty-five percent. Um, and that creates a revenue the next year. So we keep these hundred thousand projects going. We have revenue coming in every year. We have continuation of funds for the new reading program at the elementary school and for the training required to go with that. Staffing increases, which will be noted on the next slide, um, based on our enrollment. And increasing equipment expenses for the one-to-one program for special education, for athletics, to make sure that we provide students every opportunity and what they need.
So an additional to, um, for our staffing changes, an additional special education teacher based on the needs, um, will be added to the elementary school. And support for our SCL and safety initiatives at both schools will be an elementary dean of students and guidance counselor. That's a teacher on alternate assignment. I'm going to speak a little bit about that during our, um, superintendent's report to kind of go a little in-depth on what that position will look like. Along with a secondary assistant principal, it is going to be a liaison, an equity liaison. Um, and the reason why I'm talking about liaison, it's not one person to do DEI work. It's everybody's person, one person, everybody to do that work together. Um, when it becomes one person's sole responsibility, then it's very easy for it to get lost. So even though that person will be there as a liaison to help the district move forward, it's not going to be their sole responsibility. It's all of ours to do DEI. And then we're also going to increase our middle school business position by point two. And that reduces the TP, TA portion of that person's salary by point two, which we'll have to add back in.
So the vehicle proposition, uh, we usually do three buses every year. Uh, we're again doing three buses. One is sixty-five passenger, one is seventy-two passenger and a smaller van-based bus, you know, that has the shell over the van body. Um, those prices are going up significantly. Last year it was roughly three hundred and thirty thousand for those three vehicles. You can see it's four hundred and twenty-two right now and that's based on state contracts. So we have no control over that. Uh, buses are rated over five years at our transportation aid ratio, roughly sixty-four percent.
This is all Jim.
Tax. So there's a calculation in the law for the tax gap. You start with current year tax levy. You apply the tax base growth factor, which is basically the state saying how much new property and how much growth in the current properties did you have that gets added? That was a little over two percent. That's very high for most districts. Then you have the CPI factor, which is capped at two percent, even though the actual rate was eight point one percent. And that gives you a number of two, little over twenty million, almost twenty and a half million, which would be three point six eight percent increase. The exclusion is the capital levy exclusion. So when you vote on a capital project, you give us authority to bond for that project, pay for that project. There's always a local share in there. That local share is what we can add on to the tax levy. When you add that on, you get a little over twenty million, six hundred thousand, which is a four point three two percent increase. But we are only proposing to levy a two point five percent tax levy increase, which is about twenty million at twenty and one quarter million dollars from a little under twenty million. I have our final state aid from the, uh, state's budget and it's up by about sixty-two thousand dollars roughly. Show there the tax cap maximum, which is the four point three two percent. You can see the difference between what we're estimating the tax levy to be. Other revenues, small pieces, allocated fund balance, that two, two and a half percent I was talking about. Add that all together, you get a little over thirty million dollars.
So we've added, um, a little interesting slide here for us to be able to look at, considering this year, as you all know, foundation aid's been now fully funded. Um, so in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, foundation aid, um, was brought out and it just received it at three point two million dollars. Um, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen, our average increase was about point seven two percent. From two thousand and seventeen to eighteen, we had a point eight six percent. And from.
Thirteen to eighteen, right? Eight to thirteen, thirteen to eighteen.
So five-year period, five-year period and a four-year period.
We're not seeing much of an increase over those timeframes. Um, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we did see our increases are being fully funded, so fifteen point nine percent last year, and this year is at thirty-one percent. So if this gives you any indication of what's going to happen in the following year, we're going to go back down to getting that point seven two, point five. We're going to get that very small increment raise if we get that. Depending on what happens with, um, the economy and everything else that happens, we can't be anticipating that our revenue from the foundation aid's going to be is what we're going to get. So we have to be kind of careful how we use those funds because if we use all the funds this year and we expend all those funds and then with our increases, we don't see that kind of fund the following year, it's going to have a very negative impact on what we're able to offer for our students and staff.
So when the foundation aid was not fully funded and a district had already hit their backs, usually there was a hold harmless. It was either zero in bad years or it was two to three percent in good years. This year it's three percent. So basically the maximum we can estimate right now is if it's a good year, we might get three percent. So three percent on that five point seven is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's not much in a thirty million dollar budget. So we have to be, we have to worry about that.
And Jim, the, the tax cap amount that we could go up for this year was what, like eight hundred, seven hundred thousand, the max?
It was a little over eight hundred thousand, yes.
Right.
So.
So if, if we're, if we were to lose the increase in this year's foundation aid and we did, and we spent it on something that was other than one-time funds and tried to make it up next year, we would not be able, not be able to do that, right?
Correct. That's one point three billion on the foundation aid increase. So.
And that's why we've been doing the one-time funds to be able to offset and plan for that accordingly. Um, you know, we do know it's going to happen. Again, it comes down to also being fiscally sound, right? Because if you're going to spend ninety-seven point five percent of your budget and you know that you can then take another eight hundred, then are you truly being fiscally sound with when you're planning the budget? So these are all the conversations that we've been having throughout it. We just kind of wanted to share the, basically the landscape of where it was, where we are now, which is fantastic, right? We've never been to this point. So it's great. And then really kind of just paint a picture so we can understand what we know we're getting in the next five years. Again, we anticipate our five-year funds. It's always doom and gloom by year three, right? When we plan out this stuff.
If, if that, I mean, sometimes it's year two that it's doom and gloom.
But we, we really do try to do a five-year budget every year, um, to move us forward. Jim?
You're very welcome.
Kind of we just talked about.
Yeah, that we were talking about, no guaranteed increase. Three percent hold harmless was what the standard was, could become zero. We're committed to only loving property tax that we need to provide the opportunities for our students.
So. And if the state does change foundation aid, um, it does not seem like we are going to be a district that would be negatively impacted from that, most likely. Um, districts have already out our hold harmless, they have lost enrollment over the years, who are seeing full funding now. If they do change that, they will be negatively impacted.
They could be.
Yeah.
The foundation formula has gotten a lot of discussion as far as needing to be updated. Um, that's, any district that's in a growth pattern is likely to benefit. Any district that has lost is not likely to benefit. So. Summary of both sides, expenses of thirty million, revenues of thirty million. Revenue assumes below tax cap increase of a little under five hundred thousand dollars with an allocated fund balance of six hundred and seventy-six thousand. Projected gap of zero, as we've been saying all along.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much. Thank you for getting us to this point. We'll move forward now. Talia, um, student board member report.
Yeah, so hello everyone. Um, I have a few points that I wanted to make. Um, on April twenty-fifth, students Riley, Chismark and myself, along with educators Jim Smith and Joe Sapienza, were recognized at the Capital District YMCA's Outstanding Student and Educator Award Ceremony. On April twenty-seventh, the Voorisville chapter of the National Honor Society inducted forty-seven new members. Speeches were given by Superintendent McCree, high school principal DeGue, as well as nineteen eighty-five Voorisville graduate and local entrepreneur Ed Mittin. With this year's inductees, there are currently a hundred twenty-six active honor society members, including fifty-one seniors, twenty-nine juniors and forty-five sophomores. Um, for last Friday's half day, high school students participated in Wellis Day organized by Mrs. Uke and the building leadership team. Students were able to choose from a variety of activities from our faculty, including slab making, laser tag, baking, photography, um, like camp, tent, um, rope tying and many more. And a highlight for me was getting to spend time with the therapy dogs from Therapy Dog International. Uh, finally, last month, our school received a number of nominations for the Proctors High School Musical Theater Awards. Junior Ken Connolly was nominated for Best Supporting Actor. Senior Logan Esposito was nominated for Best Actor. The production was also nominated for Best Musical in Tier C and our actors will now rehearse for their performance on the Proctors stage, May thirteenth. That's it.
Nice job.
titled Opening, and Aiden Harmon for his photo titled Angel Hair. Also, if you remember, Aiden was also nominated for the Congressional Art Show. Paul Taco was there on Friday night, and he did not win, so that is unfortunate, but he did, he came in second place. And it's awesome for Aiden, I mean, that's huge. His artwork will be framed, and it will be in one of Paul Taco's office for the whole year. So what an awesome honor, I literally just found out today, so it's really good. So what a great honor for Aiden, so we're very proud of him. The board all has a little thank you from me, and on it is a little tiny pin. And let me explain what that is. It is Seth Appreciation Month in May. Last year was the first time that I've ever just gotten a pin for people, and so I purchased a pin for all the staff and myself as well. And then this year, I said, you know, I really kind of want to do this each year, but I don't think it should be something for me. So I partnered with Cal Chersky, our technology teacher in the high school, and he worked with his students, and we had about twenty-four submissions from students who designed this for teachers, knowing it was for the building and staff. Ellie Chismarke was the person who actually designed this pin this year. And my goal is, in the following years, that each year, we have a student competition that they do. They present, I pick the winning pin, and then the winning pin is designed by students and given to staff. I feel it's kind of a nice full circle appreciation, and I do know the students is happy that they were able to do that as well. So, and also, if anybody wants some really cool Voorisville designs that we can use for anything, I have about twenty-four. So that is a positive thing. Next, speaking of students, this past month, we had our student board member interviews. Get ready, Paige. And we had five students interviewed with a committee in the high school. Two students came to me, and the final student, who is being announced as our student board member, is Paige Lehman. So why don't you stand up, Paige? So Paige is going to be on the board agenda next month. She will be shadowing Talia and myself, do some onboarding with our board president. And, you know, Paige is planning on going into government in future years, so, and she has, Paige is well-rounded, she does basically everything there is for students to do in our school community, and we're very happy that, I think she's going to be a fantastic board member and student board member, so.
I want to say that I'm very proud of the fact that this board decided that we wanted to have a student serve on our Board of Education, put it out to the community, the community supported that, and we have found an outstanding representative in Talia. And Paige, you got some big shoes to fill, because Talia's been remarkable. I mean, you have been such a great contributor to this board, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, I do have a presentation, which will be very, apologize again for that, but there's a few more things that I want to keep talking about, and it says I can't share my screen.
Wonderful.
Lovely. So keep on going. Along with safety, I've talked about this before, that we are purchasing the Raptor system. Raptor is a management system for visitors that come into our buildings. We now have it, it's been set up and ready to go, now our goal is to roll it out. If you are not familiar with Raptor, everybody who will come into the district will have a license on them. Their license will then be scanned by the front office. It will be stored, as it's being scanned from the front office, it's also being put through the child offender registry, to making sure that we don't have anyone on property, they should not be on property. And then what ends up doing is, it prints out a pass, the pass will say where the person's going, the time it is, and it will have the person's picture. So we've been, many, many schools in our, in the area have this, and we do have now the system for the district, it's called the Raptor Technology System, and we are moving forward with that. Now it's just a rollout. You got it, it's here, and we're moving forward.
When does it go live, Frank?
As soon as I can get people to, to do it, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, we just have to train our front-end staff, and then hopefully, we can roll it out to our community. So I'm hoping within the next two weeks, we can have it fully out there. So next, and we've got to love technology tonight, even though you test it a thousand times and it still doesn't work, I don't really understand that. It is what it is. Okay, so let's talk about pre-K. So we did our RFP for our pre-K system, we received that, our proposals, and we now have awarded, and tonight, the contract is on for the board to review, the new provider for our pre-K program, which will be Christ the King Early Childhood Education Center. They are a secular, non-religious organization, they can service twenty of our students, and it's right, literally, probably about ten minutes around the corner from the district. So I think they are going to be a great partner, we're very excited. I am thankful for serendipity and the work that they have done with the district, and the partner that they have been. I'm going to thank them for their time and effort, and I know that they have made a positive impact in our school community. But I am excited also to have Christ the King be our new partner, and to move forward with providing our students in the UPK.
Can you clarify that it's okay for us to partner with somebody who is headquartered in Gilderland?
Yes. So Gilderland, even though is actually connected to our district, because I technically live in Gilderland, even though my kids go to Voorisville, in where I live, but it's also connected. So a community-based organization has to be up against your organization, your school, so since Gilderland is right next to us, and even if our lines didn't even blur, we still would be able to partner with Gilderland. So down the road, if we could find other partners inside Gilderland, because there's multiple other organizations, if they want to be able to also provide for our students, they could as well.
Or New Scotland.
Or New Scotland, or Bethlehem, but they're struggling in Bethlehem, there's not a lot of partners for UPK in Bethlehem. That's the reason why they currently do not have a program, so that's what we're looking for. You're welcome. All right, next one. Again, I'm going to apologize, this is small, but I will do my best to get this up and running, and I'm going to basically read a lot of it to you as well. So I want to talk about this at the curriculum committee, but we ran out of time. New York State does performance indicators for special education each year. Schools are given them, and they have to be able to submit them. It's usually typically one or two different performance indicators, and schools are responsible for presenting to the state. This year, we were responsible for indicator eight for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we gave out these surveys, basically, it's surveys to our community, everybody who has children go through CSE or CSE services, they were given a survey. You have to kind of push the parents, make sure they're filling them out, we have to have a percent rate back of ninety percent or higher. If we don't, the state makes us do it again, because they do want to have these back. So these are indicators that come out. In previous years, we did indicator thirteen, indicator six. This year is indicator eight, and that is the parental involvement during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is all public knowledge, and it's on their public portal as well. I kind of want to just share some of the data as we went through it, and I think it's kind of important as we look at it. I'm going to skip to the end really quickly, that one. So the most positive thing is that, you know, out of it all, our percent positive parental responses were ninety-five point two percent. We can't please everyone, and there is always going to be some people that are not happy, and they have their perceptions or reasons why, that can be found that incorrect. But the majority of the people who took this survey were happy, either they strongly agreed or agreed, or very strongly agreed or agreed, with the statements that were given to them. These are unprovoked, and they are anonymous. So at the IEP meeting, we discussed accommodations, modifications. Teachers and administrators seek out my input, show sensitivity to the needs of my child, encourage me to participate in decision-making. The majority of those were all agree, strongly agree, or very, very strongly agree. We only had roughly three percent that said strongly disagreed on those categories. So across the board on the respondents, which were sixty-two, those are positive responses back to our staff and PPS department. Keep on going with teacher administrators in school. It's about providing responses, offers a variety of ways to communicate with teachers, gives help, explains what options I have to disagree with. That one, there was thirty-two percent felt very strongly agree, twenty-seven percent strongly agreed, twenty-two percent agreed, one point six percent disagreed, three point two percent strongly disagreed, and if I'm reading correctly, because it's very small, one point six very strongly disagreed. So there are, you know, one, two people in each of those categories that disagreed with it, but the majority, again, are working on it. I know our PPS department is finding out why, having those conversations with those families really understands it. So we're not taking it just as they disagreed, oh, well, we're taking it as they're reaching out again, they're having surveys with more families to really understand the scope and needs of our community. Again, I'm going to be a little quick, and you have access to this as well, and I'll share it.
Is this anonymous?
It is anonymous.
So how are they reaching out to?
They're going to reach out during the surveys afterwards, like when they have CSE meetings, how do you feel, how do you have those conversations?
Okay, so they'll kind of resurvey folks.
And you can kind of tell during the meetings, how those meetings went, how they did go, to be very honest with you. You know, it's, it's, you can tell when someone's not very happy, but they are reaching out to families, and they are having general conversations with them as well. Any questions on this survey? All right. So this one's going to be a little difficult, and I do apologize, I thought I'd be able to see it a little bit better tonight. I'm going to zoom in as best I can. This is the front of the elementary school, and I'm going to kind of come up front, and I'll share this with the board also. The elementary school with the capital project, we're going to try to reconfigure as fast as we possibly can. This is drawing number seventeen of multiple drawings that still need to happen. I met with Appella Osborne, what was it, two weeks ago, Jim?
Uh, it was last week, actually, yeah.
Yep, they are our architect engineer, they are from Syracuse, they came in for a requested meeting that we have with the district of our architect, to have a simple conversation. This is the building, the elementary school building is on. Over here, you'll see the transportation, so again, you basically see shadows, but I'll walk you through it a little bit more. Here is the current bus loop where you would come in. We are going to shorten and shave off some of that area, and we're going to reconfigure that bus loop. Now, if we touch over, I think it's over an acre, Jim?
Over one acre, yeah.
Over one acre, then we have a lot more work to do when it comes to drainage and other issues, so we are touching less than one acre of empty property within it, to make sure that we can still do, because if not, it does change the whole scope of the project. As you can come in here, we're working on putting more parking on this side next to the building, so right now, there's parking, but it goes one way, we're actually looking at having them come in, that will be where your handicap parking is. The buses will come around, and they will pull in here, and then they will pull out. There will be no backing up of buses any longer. They are putting new parking spots, they will not always be able to be parked in between ten o'clock and two o'clock, due to some of the bus issues that we have. But one of the bigger concerns that we're looking at is the erosion and safety of our students. If you notice here, you can kind of see a small, faint line, that will actually be a sidewalk. So they're going to come in here to where they currently are. Right now, students are either forced to walk up in front of traffic, where it's calmed off, and then across, where they will go directly across the parking lot. Our goal is going to be that the students will have a sidewalk, they will go around to where the new entrance is, and straight over. And we're going to pull back some of this area here, which is called green space. Since there's so much erosion going on over that area, we're actually going to pull that back, so we can control it. And as you know, we are putting new, new areas over here, similar to the areas over there, to make sure that we don't, we don't get any more erosion next to the building. The front of the building, as we've already discussed, will be an outdoor seating area and space area for students and staff to go. Also, there will be two giant kind of canopies, one in front of the new cafeteria area, and one in front of the main entrance, that one's about twelve foot by eighteen foot. Again, they happen at SHPO, so they will look exactly like what we have, so copper roofs, light roofs, you know, really nice pillars, so you will match the building, and SHPO has to approve it. And that can get kind of crazy if you haven't worked with one before, it kind of goes through a process. But I want to kind of give a first glance at how the new flow of the elementary school will be. It'll no longer look like a transportation facility, it'll no longer look more like a facility in itself, it will look like a school. And it will be able to have more parking at night for our community, as well as they come in. And then if you notice, over here, I didn't talk about the parking, but since we're moving about thirty bus drivers out of that parking, that's going to create thirty more spots in that area as well. So you will be seeing a larger increase in our parking areas. Any questions about that? Again, this is first draft, second draft, third draft, it's ongoing. I do have a lot of questions, Jim and I both do, but we're still working through some of these issues. Any questions on that? All right, and the next one. This is a rendering of the transportation facility. I hope you can see that a little bit better than, yeah, that's actually better. Okay. So this will be out in the back here, and I'm going to kind of go over it. Of course, you have to imagine, it's in color, it has actually like foliage and grass. This fence here is going to go all the way around the transportation facility. You want to fence in your facilities, you want to be able to make sure that you can contain it, that's the best we can, because we are putting in an effort in maintenance to our buildings, and so when we get, start moving into electric buses down the road, we really do want to safeguard our taxpayer investments. It's going to be RFA, right, Jim?
Yeah, it's going to be regular, regular frequency, just like your garage.
Regular frequency, so that maybe the bus driver and people can come in and out, being able to have that off, of course, we'll have it off during the day, but at night, you know, bus is coming back, it's eleven o'clock at night, they'll be able to get in and be able to park. This fence will have landscaping on either side of it, so we're going to try to dull the institutional look of it, you know, by adding some landscaping. If you look over here, this blank space is actually the retaining wall, it goes all the way up, and then there's an EPO fence there. There will be another fence that goes on top of that EPO fence to stop straight laws, right? So that will be able to control all of those areas. But I wanted to give you, I know Tricia during our facilities committee was like, can we get a render, because all these conceptual drawings are a little bit more difficult to understand. This is the main office area of the building, this is the base of it, and on the other side is the wash area and turnaround. So in the wash area, there is a wash area that is going to be heated, so we can do it in the wintertime, and all of that water will go into a basin that's stored, and it has to be pumped out. So we have to pump out all of our water, we can't just be letting it go in other places that it shouldn't be, so everything will be environmentally friendly. Any questions?
Excuse me, Frank, will they, will there be parking for bus drivers?
Oh, yes. So Jim, how many parking spots did we say, thirty?
I believe it was twenty-eight, I think.
Twenty-eight. We're also looking at putting a, an electrical charging station on the other side, you know, even now, being able to plan early for that. And again, we have a ton of base work in there for all of our electrical issues that we're going to need down the future, so that's all put in. But there's about twenty spots here, and there's all the spots that we need for our building as well. There's also a snow scraper that our bus drivers really, really wanted, that, Jim will attest to that. So as they drive through it, instead of our people going through it each morning giving off all the snow, they'll actually be able to drive through and go, be able to maintain the.
Our, our mechanics.
Our mechanics, okay, I understand. Yeah, but there is a lot of parking, it's, it's kind of hard to tell because on the other side of that area, but then there's also a one-way spot that goes around. Other questions? We don't know the color yet, so not going to be purple, if you're telling me I couldn't do that. I'm meeting about finishes next week, to have a better understanding of some of the recommendations for finishes. With the transportation facility, our transportation department has been very involved in working with us, and also working with the transportation engineer, to be able to make sure that it's a functioning building. Any questions? All right, and I have one more thing, I'm sorry, there's a lot to go through. So the last thing I wanted to talk about is the tentative job description and duties of the assistant principal and the dean of students at the elementary school, and really what's going on at the high school. As we've been talking about it, we're working with our administration to be able to kind of work through what that's going to look like down the road for our six through twelve assistant principal. Talking to the administrators, they really do want a six through twelve assistant principal to be able to help with referrals. Mrs. DeGueye was actually a six through twelve administrator, so she has very good experience understanding what it means to do middle school and high school. But we are looking actually redistributing the job duties of the administrators that are in the building. So with that being said, then our athletic director, who is doing the dean of students, would actually only be focusing in on all attendance issues. So Joe would be doing our dean of students and attendance issues, grade six through twelve. That's a lot in itself, working with our PSSs, making sure all the attendance issues get done. It's supposed to be a sixty, forty split between athletic director and dean of students. So, you know, that attendance issue is making sure students are down, being with parents, working with parents, working with other issues, that's going to be the issue that So with that being said, then our athletic director, who was doing the dean of students, would actually only be focusing in on all attendance issues. So Joe would be doing our dean of students and attendance issues, grade 6 through 12. That's a lot in itself, working with our PSSs, making sure all the attendance issues get done. It's supposed to be a 60-40 split between athletic director and dean of students. So, you know, that attendance issue is making sure students are down, being with parents, working with parents, working with other issues. That's going to be the issue that they'll be working through and working on. So that's what they're working on now to be able to figure that out. And they'll also be doing supervision and safety of the building and substitute for administration as needed. The assistant principal will be working on a wider way of different issues, but mostly disciplinary referrals, supporting restorative practices, evaluations, maybe. There's been a conversation about the assistant principal working on evaluations. At this point in time, that's going to be a slow rollout, because I really want to make sure that the assistant principal's focusing in on the building organization and culture, and the principals can still work on that. So they're going to maintain student files, help with DASA, safety team, also help with the extracurricular code of conduct enforcement, along with the athletic director, and also substitute for the principals when needed, do parent conferences, second step anti-bullying program, attendance and supervision, extracurricular events as needed. So we're working through that, but that's kind of the rough draft of what that's going to look like. We still have a little bit more work to do to really fine-tune it and work through the organizational structure. But right now, there needs to be organization, and, you know, really making an opportunity to develop standard operating procedures, a clear, detailed understanding of job duties moving forward will be very helpful for the buildings. And I believe I shared the dean of students with the board for the elementary school, the draft. And I can go over that as another. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
All right. At this point, we'll move on to the approval. Are there any questions for anything? Let's approve the minutes for 4.1, approval of the minutes for our last month's meeting. Does anyone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Anyone want a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And action items of 5.1, the treasure reports, and then 5.2 throughout, all the way down to 5.2.72. Anyone like a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations to the folks who just got tenure. All right. Now we have 5.3, CSE recommendations, and 5.4, and 5.5. So there's both the sublists and out-of-town field trip requests, which includes Seager and Brown Gilderland Conference. And also, let's do 5.6. And 5.7, we'd like to add 5.7, which is not currently on the agenda. Kendra Campana, who graduated from Borisville, would come back if we approved this as a varsity girls' soccer coach. So 5.3 to 5.7. Would anyone like to move all those things? Are there any questions that I need to?
I'll move all of them.
All right. Anyone like a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And there we are. All right, 6.1. Order committee did not meet. We will meet prior to the June board meeting. And 6.2, that was the curriculum committee meeting?
Curriculum committee met on April 25th, and at that time, we received a recommendation from Mr. McCree to purchase a reading program called Wonders, just published by McGraw-Hill Publishing Company. Jeff Vivenzio, Karen Conroy discussed the specifics about that. We talked about it. Jeff and Karen expressed why it rose above other programs that had been reviewed. There were some questions about its cultural responsiveness due to a critique that came from an article. The people from McGraw-Hill were online on the screen, and we asked them about that. They addressed that. And the committee felt that this was worthy for approval by the board. Since that time, there's been some further discussion about Wonders, and we are going to reconvene soon. What was the date we picked?
Next week.
Next week, to talk about this a little further before we make a decision about the recommendation. We had hoped to discuss, well, we did discuss the parent questionnaire responses slightly, but you went over those tonight. And one of the things that we tabled at our last meeting was a discussion that we all should be having eventually about artificial intelligence and its impact, and what it means for public education. And we're starting to talk a little bit about what we're hearing, what we're reading, what we're seeing that causes us to wonder how this is going to impact what we do. And we'll have that, that'll be an ongoing discussion on the curriculum committee.
That's for sure.
Yeah. That's it.
All right. Facilities committee?
We did meet. I do not have minutes, but I have an agenda, so we're doing what we talked about. We ended up doing sports fields and tennis sports, which are scheduled for soon, right?
Soon.
Been there. Yeah, that'll be awesome, having that done, sort of a two-stage project there with the leaves in the fall. We talked about what intercom system that's been ordered. I noticed, by the way, I went down there, that the new buzzer is up, so that must have all been.
It's up, high-class, state-of-the-art, and everybody's very, very happy.
That's fantastic. There's no more signs saying to call if it doesn't work.
And believe it or not, it came in in a timely manner, which is unbelievable nowadays.
Yeah, fantastic. The playground is going to be mulched. We had a radon update. We talked a little bit about the Blackbird Paradise Garden around sort of roles and responsibilities for upkeep and stuff we need to do there. We discussed the use of facilities policy, I think, right? Yeah, around sort of a high-level discussion about it. I think some of that's going to continue. Is that correct? Yes. All right. I'm getting it. We had a field usage update from Joe Zapienza, and we talked a bit about the capital project. And I think that was it. Did I miss anything while I was in Tricia there? All right.
Frank, got it?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it all.
All right. That was a quick update.
Policy, I think, has had about five hours of meetings, not exaggerating, since our last meeting. We like being together. Yes, you guys have some special quality time there. So feel free to spend the next 45 minutes if you want to just get comfortable.
Okay. For policy, we met twice since our last board meeting. We met on May 3rd and also April 18th. And all those meetings are online and recorded, if anyone wants to watch them. We love differing opinions, so. Okay, so we have three policies on our agenda for tonight that we worked on. The first is 1500, which is public use of school facilities, which Rob was just referring. We probably have future updates, but for right now, we at least got one done that we wanted to get done before the end of the school year. And basically, we're trying to change our approach to ask all longer-term rentals, so like somebody that uses the fields for a whole season. We're going to have set deadline dates by season so that we can get all requests in and fairly judge them all with all in hand. Now that we're growing as a community, we're having more and more requests, and it's getting hard to make sure we're being fair and letting everyone have equal access. So we're going to try that, see if that helps a little bit. So that's basically the change we made to the policy for now, and we cleaned up a few things here and there. We still want to look at the fee schedule, but we haven't gotten to that part yet, but at least we have this all set. So that will be up for vote tonight for adoption. Any questions on that one, 1500?
No, thank you. Well, just, no, I think I have to abstain on that one, because I'm also on the board of New Scotland Soccer.
Oh, okay, good point. Thank you, Archie. Okay, also up for vote tonight is policy 5152, admission of non-resident students. And board might recognize that we discussed this, I think, way back in the December-January timeframe. And at that point in time, we were working on the definition in the policy under number one, under tuition. And up for new language tonight is number two under tuition, which is addressing students with educational disabilities. So you'll see that in bold if you pull up the policy. So that is up for vote tonight. Any questions on that? Okay, then 5205 has been taking us a long time, but it's finally, I think, kind of ready. This is a brand-new policy for our district, but a lot of it is cut and paste from other policies we had. Some of it's new. It is going to be part of our code of conduct, so it's 5205 is now called code of conduct, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. So this is a first read, so the board has plenty of time to look at it. But it will go together with a whole code of conduct for the public hearing in July. So this will just give everyone more opportunity to process it and let me know if there's any concerns or questions. Basically, this section combined, we had an athletic code of conduct. That wasn't actually in our policy manual, but you could find it on our website. And I think kids have to sign and parents have to sign in the beginning of the year. We also had a policy 5200 and 5200R, which were called extracurricular activities. Those have been rolled in here, so it's now a combined code that covers both athletics and any activity, any selected. We also incorporated some parts of 5280, which are interest classic and modified sports. We got stuck a few times trying to clear out language, and we brought in administration, and Mr. Gay helped us, and Joe Zapienza helped us, and I'm sure people helped them before they came to us, so thank you. And just so the board knows, when we vote this in in July after public hearing, it will abolish the redundant policies that we currently have on our books. So that's 5200, 5200R, athletic code of conduct. And we also actually did have ready two other policies that go around athletics, 5280 and 5281, which are eligibility. But because they cross-reference 5205, which we can't vote on until July, we'll bring them as a package.
Excellent.
So that is your first read. Let's see. Also, so for next meeting, June 7th, we're going to have to get through the code of conduct. We have made a lot of progress. We've gotten through it all. We just have to discuss a few items. So that will do it our June meeting. And also, we have almost ready to bring, but probably won't talk about it again until July, a bunch of policies around graduation, grading systems, and the two sports ones that I already brought up, 5280 and 5281. Depending on who's on the committee in July. They're all set up to run with some. Any questions?
Must see TV, though, the videos of meetings. All of them, they're fabulous. Thank you to all the committees, and thank you for the hours and hours that were put in. I, I can only imagine the effort that was that. All right, with that, we'll move to new business. 7.1, we have an action on the resolution appointing personnel for the vote that is next, this coming Tuesday, not tomorrow, the week from tomorrow. We'll also do 7.2, approve the resolution. And well, are there any questions on the three policies? Well, we're only going to do the two, first two, which are adopting the revisions, so 7.4 and 7.5. Are there any questions about the revisions?
Can I ask a question on 7.1?
Yes.
Are those rates hourly, or are those lap rates?
Which the.
Personnel.
Personnel. For school budget vote. Generally, they're put as hourly.
Okay, good. They seem really low if they weren't.
Yeah. So 7.1 to 7.5. Does anyone want to move that?
There are no more questions?
I'll move it.
Any seconds?
A second.
You can have a pardon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, except for me abstaining on 1500.
I, I may also abstain. I don't know the, I don't remember if it's, my husband's on the board, but I think I'm okay to vote.
You're okay to vote.
Yeah, all right. I never remember that. All right, we're going to move on. So with that, we move to, we do not have to approve the press reading. We just have. So we're going to move to 8.1, the opportunity for the public to be heard. Would anyone like to come to the podium and? All right, opportunity for the board to be heard. With that, the dates to remember, there is a budget vote on the 16th and a special Board of Ed meeting on the 18th following that Thursday. So the vote is from 2:30 till 9:00 p.m. And I believe there will be chicken. And with that, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Robyn. Anyone who would like a second back?
Second.
Anyone all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful day.